This is Thursday, March 8th, the Situate Planning Board hearing. We have an agenda that's been posted. Do we have a second?
Second.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first on our agenda tonight is the continuation of the public hearing for zoning map and zoning bylaw changes. And I won't read the whole public notice here, this continuation of that public notice. We have two items that we're considering. Zoning for Green Bush Driftway area to amend the zoning map and zoning bylaw. And zoning for marijuana establishments to amend the zoning bylaw for a prohibition of marijuana establishments. As I said, we've discussed this at our last, let's see, when was that? February 22nd, I guess. And we had two items on the agenda. For completeness, I'll go through both items, although I think we're pretty well in agreement on item number one, which is to amend the zoning map to change the boundaries of the business district and village business overlay district to include the highlighted areas as shown on the map entitled "Proposed Extension of the Business District and Village Business Overlay District Dated December 2017." Issue a new zoning map reflecting this amendment and amend section 322 reflect the new mapping. We've had some extensive discussion on this last time. First off, any additional input or comments from the board? I will open it up to the public here if anybody has any comments on that particular item. Okay, good. I think if, and I'll speak for the board, in our last discussion, I think we were in unanimous support of moving forward on this particular zoning bylaw change.
Correct.
Perhaps we, if we can vote this one and just get it out of the way.
I thought we were waiting, oh, I guess that was the, because we didn't want to close the public meeting?
Right. We're going to talk about the other one. Let's hold that and we'll get, I think since everybody's here and we have kind of a short period of time, we'll try to get them both at the same time. Next item on the agenda is the zoning for marijuana establishments. The text to the current zoning bylaw, the current zoning map and the complete text of the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw and map showing the proposed changes to the zoning map are available for inspection. The projected, the recommended language, let me see if I've got it here. Where is it? Oh, here it is. So what's proposed is to amend section 420 of the zoning bylaw by adding a new use category, GG marijuana establishments, and to add a new section 492 prohibiting marijuana establishments. And the new sections, zoning bylaws, section 492 is proposed, reads "In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 3A2, all types of marijuana establishments as defined in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 1, and as may otherwise be defined by Massachusetts law regulation, to include without limitation all marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, onsite consumption of marijuana at a marijuana retailer location, and other types of licensed marijuana-related businesses, and the conducting of any such activity for commercial purposes by whichever name used shall be prohibited within the town of Situate. This prohibition shall not be construed to affect the medical use of marijuana as expressly authorized by the provisions of Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012 and 105 CMR 725 as the same may be amended from time to time." So that's what's on the table. We had a discussion about this last time, and frankly, we left it open in order to get a lot more input than I think most of us, at least on the board, got this proposal, but we hadn't really received kind of the background rationale behind it, knowing that we have currently in place a moratorium on the implementation of any of this, which I think goes through November of this year.
November 30th, yes.
One question we did ask, and maybe if you've got an answer to it, was whether that moratorium can be extended?
No.
Cannot.
It cannot.
It cannot?
Cannot.
Because?
That's what they've, that's what they've ruled.
This is from the Attorney General?
Yes.
Okay. All right. It would be great to get input on those who are proposing this.
We're here.
Great. I brought them, sorry. I figured that's why everybody was here.
Thought maybe you had samples, no?
Yeah.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, Jim Boudreaux, and the Town Administrator here in Situate. And one of the things I was tasked to do when I got here was look at the marijuana bylaw finder when the moratorium was, and then put something before the board to deal with the expiration of that moratorium. Where Situate voted against question four, I think 55 or 56 percent against, and we have one of the most active anti-opioid coalitions in the state, what I put before the board to select was a prohibition on recreational marijuana facilities that you have before you. The board voted at five nothing, and sent it out to you, and that's the genesis of why we're here. I'll turn it over to the people who are really smart, let you, let them tell you why they think we should enact this prohibition.
Thanks, Jim.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Galvin, 81st Parish Road. I'm a resident and I'm also a town employee. I coordinate our federal grant here in Situate, the Situate Facts Coalition, which is a real honor to do in our community. It started as a grassroots effort about seven years ago, then we applied for and received a very prestigious federal prevention grant. And primarily, what I do is work with all the stakeholders in the town, so with the police, with the schools, with healthcare providers, with parents, with clergy leaders, all the different people, sectors in the community, to work on evidence-based prevention strategies. So throughout this time period, marijuana has always been on the top of our list. So we don't discriminate, we work on all substances, but marijuana is absolutely one of the earliest substances of use still. It's not opioids first, ever. And we continue to struggle with changing the whole community's perception, and particularly young people's perception, about the harms from marijuana use. It's very harmful to use before age 25 at any level. So we work closely with Social Hospital, who are seeing increased admissions for marijuana. The town of Situate Social Services Manager works with adults with major mental illnesses because of marijuana use among the young adult population. And our schools, Jen Lopes in particular, asked me to share that she's seeing it younger and younger and more serious. So it's a persistent problem, certainly because the cultural norms and acceptance of marijuana use has changed so much over the last 20 years, which is all well and good, it's just not safe for kids. So as far as the community's appetite for having recreational retail marijuana in the community, they've said time and again, absolutely not. We've had lots of education and stakeholder training around it, and I've, anyway, I have a lot of information about the topic, and I would love to, after everyone goes through, answer questions that you guys have. I really know about the trends and kind of the impacts at, to different demographics. So I'd be really happy to share that with you now or anytime.
Just to be clear, on the proposal, it's recreational marijuana sort of in a public setting, it doesn't have any effect on personal use?
That's right. So the state law is 21-plus, it has been since last year. July 1st is when the stores come online. So we, the state delayed those regulations, and now they're, they're starting, July 1st, private businesses can apply for recreational marijuana store licenses and businesses, that's right. So we don't, the town of Situate has said, no, we don't want even statewide legalization, but that's, that was a state ballot initiative, so it's legal 21-plus. And now the stores will, there'll be additional stores. Right now, across the state, there are 22 medical marijuana dispensaries. All of those will essentially flip to become stores where anyone who's 21 can go and buy marijuana and marijuana products, including really high concentrates of THC in pink lemonade and brownies and candies and chocolate-covered blueberries, and they're really, really strong and potent. They'll be highly regulated for 21-plus, but as the chief, I'm sure, will tell you, lots of those 21-plus people will be driving, are all around everywhere in Massachusetts. So there's a big enforcement piece to this, which is part of my public health perspective. But really, the harms I see from an addiction standpoint and a mental health standpoint are really concerning. So the, the whole picture is concerning.
Is that the case where all the medical marijuana facilities will be able to sell? I thought that was not the case?
That is essentially the case.
That they were being separate?
No. They'll be regu, they'll be doubly regulated for a little while by TBH and the Cannabis Control Commission, and eventually it'll be taken over to be all the CCC, but effectively they flip.
Okay.
Yeah.
And are the regulations now in place, the state regulations?
July 1st, yeah, they're just, they're about to publish them, July 1st, yeah.
So have you seen them?
I've seen the draft regulations, I can share those with the board, and we had an opportunity to give input. I did give input on behalf of Situate, and many people did. A lot of them were around advertising and signage. It's here. I mean, the reality is, there will be marijuana stores. They're nearby already, and some communities are absolutely zoning them in for the excise tax potential. But Situate community members, particularly because of our substance problems at all ages, we don't want more. Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Jim?
I'm Jen Keefe, I'm the Director of Public Health, I'm representing the Board of Health here. Kind of dovetail with some of what Anne Marie was speaking to. We see a pretty significant social service need in the town, hence the employment of our manager of social services, who deals with a lot of mental health issues, works directly with Anne Marie and Situate Facts on some joint initiatives. And, you know, the concern from my perspective is that, you know, the, any financial gain that can be achieved by this will be far outweighed by the social service needs and the additional impacts, not only to children but to adults and the mental health services that we would then have to try to provide. The mental health services already are not enough for what we need to do, you know, locally, statewide, and I think adding this element will just simply increase that social service need. The other thing that particularly concerns me are the edibles. Although they would not be permitted or inspected by me, I think it would be very easy to see the accidental blending of marijuana edibles with identically looking non-marijuana edibles. So you've got the gummy bears, and you've got all the brownies, and all that great stuff that can be misconstrued. You have little kids taking brownies to lunch, and are they taking mom's brownies or are they taking their own brownies?
We have students at the high school already with, you know, they're illegally acquired, but they're legal THC-infused lemonades that they get from a legal-aged friend or family member, and they bring them to school. So we're dealing with it already. So I expect we'll be dealing with it more anyway, but having local access would just, you know, more access is more access.
Again, there's one other issue with those, are the dosages. So you buy a THC-infused candy bar, one or two squares of that candy bar is a dose.
A serving, yeah.
I don't know anybody who has the willpower to open a candy bar, eat two squares, and put it back. So they're seeing all over the place, people eating the candy bars, because it's a candy bar, and they're overdosing on the edibles, because even if you eat one or two, it's not the same as inhaling it, so you don't get any feeling from it. So you wait, you take a couple more, because you're not getting any impact. So it'll take 30 minutes, 45 minutes for that to actually get into your bloodstream, and then the overdose. And they're on the way to the emergency room, they're on the way to the hospital. So the edibles are a huge, huge issue. Sorry, I didn't want to jump in.
No, please, true. Please, yeah.
The, last year I went to a chief's, Mass Chiefs of Police meeting, and we had a speaker from Vail, Colorado, the Chief of Police from the Vail, Colorado Police Department. And he started his speech by saying, what was Massachusetts thinking? He had read the recreational marijuana law as proposed and voted on, and he was just shaking his head. Far more lenient, way more susceptible to, you know, abuse than what they had in Colorado. And Colorado was struggling. We hear all these stories, and some of them very legit stories to an extent, of kids with seizures and the things that marijuana can do to help them. Most of that help comes in the form of CBDs, not THC. There's a cannabinoid ingredient in the marijuana plant that can help that. It's not tetrahydrocannabinol, it's not THC. THC is a psychoactive ingredient by which people get high. It's mind-altering. This is not the marijuana like they want you to believe, that was around in the 70s, that was 9 percent, maybe at the highest, 18 percent THC. Right now, this is medically, chemically enhanced, and what they do is they turn around, they make waxes and dabs from it, right? It's 90 to 95 percent THC. The stuff that's going into some of these edibles is, again, it's hard to regulate. You eat more than what you're supposed to eat, and you're going to trip, and you're going to have a bad experience. We are experiencing that in Situate right now. We have arrested people this past year stumbling on the wrong side of Front Street, driving on the wrong side of Front Street, knocking down flower pots. Two flat tires and continuing to try to drive away from the cruiser that's trying to stop it. Get them out of the car, no alcohol, none. It's all THC. Couldn't even stand up, right? This is what's coming, and it's coming to, this was no kid, this was a guy in his 40s. So right now, in Massachusetts, we have no good way to identify people who are impaired by the effects of THC. There's no breathalyzer for it. We have officers in Situate who are trained in drug recognition, and they're working towards, you know, being able to testify in court to the effects of THC on a person as it relates to impairment while operating a vehicle. We're not there yet, and we are farther along than most, every other town and city in the state right now.
So could I, I'm just trying to be clear here. The primary rationale is trying to keep it, keep access out of the hands of the younger people who are more susceptible to impacts from it.
Much like alcohol, we want it out of the hands of kids.
Alcohol's much more addictive than marijuana, okay?
Don't think for a minute that this is a kid's problem. It's well beyond that.
Well, what I'm saying, though, is that the primary impact is really with kids who are less than 25 years old, essentially. That's where the major impacts are.
If you were in front of that 45-year-old guy driving down the road.
I'm just trying to be clear, right? I'm just trying to be clear. What we're trying to accomplish here is, is managing the accessibility. We have no ability to manage the use of it privately or individually, right? And people are going to do what they're going to do in that regard, and that's not what we're proposing here tonight. Is that correct? I just want to be clear. We're not proposing a ban on the use of marijuana individually.
No, just stores.
It's, it's public use, it's public access.
It's not public use, it's just stores, retail stores we're trying to ban.
The access.
Like a bar.
Like a liquor store.
Yeah, liquor store, more like.
That's what you're trying to do.
That's what we want, we would like the citizens of Situate to have spoken and said we don't want that in our community. Not now, I think that possibly someday when we see how these regulations actually play out, but just with, just like with prescription opioids and with highly regulated alcohol industry, which is my family's industry. It, just because there's a law and there are licenses doesn't mean that people aren't going to have access to it that, that shouldn't, right? So I do think that we continue to work at the big-picture perspective of prevention of harms for all ages, not just those under 21. That's, that's what we do. We can prevent people from starting early, we can prevent lots of progression of the disease of addiction and all the harms that come to families and communities because of that. So we do work on all that, we don't legislate all of that, but we work on that from a public health, very comprehensive approach. That's a really long speech of mine. But what we know we can do by reducing outlets of any type, like we do with prescriptions now, like we do with alcohol licenses, working on better bylaw licensing practices for even our alcohol sales in Situate, we're working on that. We want to do that for marijuana, too, and we can pre, be, we have the, municipalities have the opportunity right now to be preemptive. It's very early, it's a very new industry. Frankly, even what we've learned from out west and states that have recreational marijuana from, from many years, the data, the science is actually kind of mixed. There's many more car accidents, there are more ER hospitalizations for sure at all ages, there's little kids that eat the gummy bears by accident for sure. But the big-picture cost-benefit thing, we don't know yet. So we're saying, let's wait, Situate, because once it's in, it's not going to go away, let's ban it out of our community at this time and see how it plays out in Massachusetts. We can always zone businesses back in. But we, we're saying for all ages and for the many harms that come, including from adult use, we can't handle it. We, you know, the cup runneth over with our substance problems, and that's very sincere. And I can, you know, share data on all of that, but it's, it's, it's hard. And like Chief Stewart was saying, there is no, there is no scientific test. When I think about driving and walking down the street with other people driving, it's pretty frightening what's going on already. And if there was a store where you could get them more easily, there'll be more of that on all of our streets. So no thank you to that. There's no roadside test, there's no blood test, because marijuana stays in your system for weeks. Even if you smoked or ingested three weeks ago, a blood test would show you still had marijuana in your system. Also, people's tolerance for marijuana is very different. So there's no, there's actually no scientific test right now. So there's no way to really charge people for driving high.
The blood test showing marijuana in your system isn't going to convict somebody of killing somebody, driving under the illegal system, because there's no benchmark for what the THC was.
For point, blah, blah, blah.
At the point of the accident, the time of the accident. And what exactly is the benchmark for impairment by THC? Alcohol, we have, we have numbers to put to that, .08s, .05s. We don't have that with THC. What I would like to see is until the town and the state gets a better response, that we don't allow these establishments in Situate. It's still available, the towns that want to allow it, it's still available to the people in Situate, they have to drive to Hanover to a basis, okay? If they want marijuana, they'll drive to Hanover to a store.
They can grow it individually, too.
That's right, already. Yep, six plants in a row, yeah.
Okay, this has been really helpful.
Okay.
Appreciate you all coming, but I also want to make sure, since we have an audience here, to see if there's anybody else who has any comments.
Questions for us?
You can stay there.
You can stay right there if you, if you wouldn't mind, just in case other questions come up.
Any questions?
Any, any questions or comments?
Can I share my email? I have so much more to say, but I would like, is this recorded, this meeting?
Yes.
So I'll just share my contact information in case people have questions after this meeting. Really love to hear from all sides, because there are many sides to this topic. So it is a-galvin, G-A-L-V-I-N, at situateMA.gov, and I'll share the regulations with you guys through Nancy. Likewise, if there's other questions, really happy to partner with you guys and solve the problem.
What is the, what is the sort of going-forward plan? Let's assume that this does get banned and all this, is there still sort of people evaluating this going forward?
There's a pretty robust commission that was established, similar to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission. It's called the Cannabis Control Commission, and it's led by former State Senator Jen Flanagan, and it's very.
At the state level.
At the state level. And they're doing a really great job, in my opinion. It's a, it's a hard thing, you know, the, like the chief's meeting alluded to, the original ballot initiative was written by the industry, basically, and so the state commission was established once the, once the ballot came through, yes, for Massachusetts, and it's really balanced. It is led, the chairperson is an industry person, is a pro-marijuana legalization person, so I feel like it's, it's well done. We're good at regulations in Massachusetts. But it's, but we're going to have to see how it plays out. I think it's, it's confusing for sure. I think people, even in the industry, are still confused about medical, recreational, and all that stuff. So it's hard. I think it'll take a long time for police departments and things like that to catch up with what, what it's going to be like. So I look to them as really good leaders, yeah.
Thank you.
My pleasure, thanks, everybody.
Any other comments?
You can stay there, if you want. I know you keep wanting to move.
I don't, I don't.
Well, I think, if I may, what this board, we're looking at, as you said, accessibility. We're not evaluating whether it's good or bad.
Right, right.
That's not our purve, we're just saying, as you said, you know, is there an economic impact to Situate that we might be gained by having these establishments?
Right, yeah.
And we're weighing that against, as you said, the accessibility, which then may make it more easy to get.
Right.
And as you said, I did not, I was not aware of the medical marijuana being available to retail, because there is a, right in Hanover, right off of 123.
Brockton, Plymouth.
Yeah, so it's, we're talking four miles away.
Yeah.
It's not, it reminds me of back in the 1920s when a lot of towns banned alcohol.
Right.
There were dry towns, and then eventually they kind of all went away.
Right.
So, but we're at that very beginning stage, and so that's what we're sort of evaluating, is that accessibility, I think.
Right. And it's 3 percent, it's a 3 percent excise to the town is the upside, that money, and that could be substantial. But I don't think it's that our residents can't get it, so I'm not worried about that. They're getting it plenty already, and there'll be more. But would Situate lose out on that 3 percent? For a little while, yes, but I think that 3 percent would not cover.
So my question, you know, I, all of your comments are very valid, very understandable about more resources and more health impacts, but I look at it and say, can't I just drive to Hanover? Like, is it really going to be, I mean, actually, Hanover was, that section at one point was actually part of Situate many years ago.
Right, right.
So, I mean, it's the size of a town.
Right.
Is it going to matter?
Right.
You think in your, in your estimation, whether it's in Hanover or whether it's in Situate? That's what we're trying to decide.
I think, well, I think it buys us some time to see how this plays out. I think the state could rein in, you know, change regulations, fund prevention, front interventions, and community policing strategies. Like, I think it's going to be ugly for a couple of years, would be my prediction, and then we'll kind of, I think, I think eventually, my personal opinion, is that ultimately it will be like liquor stores, and we'll probably have one.
Well, let's hope it's not as bad as liquor stores.
Right. But that's what I mean, like, we didn't do a super-duper job of that, you know what I mean? So, so when you think about, I think philosophically, what you're thinking about, zoning and planning and what you want, how many of what you want in your community is, this is, this is our opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, because it's hard to undo it, like I mentioned, and I think we have too many liquor stores. I think, you know, and I think if you look at public health impacts and you look at density of stores like that, it's not a, it's not a pro for a community, ever. So it's a, it is a harmful substance at all age levels because of some of the impacts. Doesn't mean it can't be used responsibly, possibly for some medical uses that are yet to be all played out, but how many you have and if you have them affects, you know, the community that they're open in. So I think, I do think it matters, Hanover versus Situate. I do, I think we're lucky to have the, yeah.
Thank you.
My pleasure, yeah.
I just, I recognize we've got another crack minute, but I want to try to bring this to closure.
Thank you.
So, any other comments?
I'll just say that, while I fully respect, like, the public health concerns, the impact on social services, as written, I find that the bylaw is a little bit overly stringent from a zoning perspective. I don't, I guess I don't understand how, if we banned all retail locations that's where marijuana is probably sold and available, that would preclude a testing laboratory or a cultivation center, which might very well be like an indoor warehouse that, you know, has very limited signage or something, it's kind of security-restricted, how that would, I guess, make marijuana more available if we have a retail, a ban on retail establishments or smoking establishments, whatever. That's, that's from a zoning perspective, I have a hard time reconciling that.
Right. Like a manufacturing piece, like a commercial piece, yeah?
Right.
Yeah, that, that's different. I mean, I don't know if there's a place to do that in Situate, yeah.
Well, it's included as a prohibition of.
Right. See, you could.
Any.
Unless that was cultivation for medical only, right?
No, medical's, medical's in.
Medical's separate.
Possession, use, and cultivation, that's, so I think that's what's proposed here. It would, other than medical marijuana.
Well, that's where I was saying, is that, could you have a facility that only grows for medical marijuana, as an example? That's what I thought, we still could.
Yes, we still, we allow that in the zoning.
Yeah, we do.
We allow that in the zoning, yeah.
Well, that's where I think it's confusing, is that.
Believe me, the whole thing's confusing.
What, what is allowed and what isn't allowed.
Right.
So.
This is only recreational marijuana, this has nothing to do with medical marijuana. We allow, we allow medical marijuana.
This is, they call it adult use.
But I guess Ben's comment was, the cultivation, and I said, oh, but that would be only for recreational, and then you just said, no. So that's where I'm confused.
No, I said, I said that recreational cultivation is part of the ban.
That's right, that's correct.
Okay, that's clarification.
I can't imagine any business growing for one and not the other after July 1st.
I know.
I mean, so.
And I even have a hard time to believe that someone would want to be in Situate, because because as we know, it's at the end of the road, it's near the ocean, it's not exactly the biggest commercial center, but, but still.
But still, yeah.
I have to agree with the gentleman on the board, which is, from a zoning point of view, I find this very stringent. And philosophically, we can't allow that to cloud our minds, and I understood exactly where you're coming from. I, I understood all the pros and cons and have seen those establishments. But I don't know that we really want to wait and see what happens all the time. I mean, we could always be first and set the mark and, and try to put it that way for us as well. I know that alcohol has been a problem, if not as much as marijuana and opioids. Alcohol is a huge problem in this town, so, you know, you can't ban one, promote another. I mean, that's one of those issues.
It's not the night before we zoned in alcohol.
I know.
It's the night we have the opportunity to zone out something that harms our residents.
No, I just think...
That's the difference.
Yeah, and I do think the zoning bylaw is, is a little stringent in that, in that point, because the cultivation, I, I think, is, is separate from use.
I think this comes down in my mind to, are we going to be preemptive and, and take it slow, or are we going to be a little more liberal on this side? And I would have to say, myself, I would fall more on the preemptive side, at least at this point, and more worried about accessibility for the younger age. I think, you know, once you get past a particular age, it's going to be available to people, and we have to regulate it properly, just like we should regulate alcohol and tobacco, right? And, by the way, which are much more addictive, much more heavily used across the United States than marijuana.
It's changing, it's changing.
And I don't, and I think the predictions are that it, that it still would be that way. But from the perspective of, of sort of managing, managing our, our sort of foray into this, you know, I think you've convinced me that the, that a preemptive approach would be a good place to start with the, with the knowledge that we could come back and remove this ban. And actually, that's why we were asking about the, the moratorium, as to whether we could extend that and just keep that sort of rolling while other people had an opportunity to sort of figure things out.
Right.
But that's sort of where I'm falling out at, and...
Well, and I think, just so everyone's clear, that we're just making a recommendation right now to town meeting, or to the, the board. I mean, it's going to be voted on at town meeting. So, we're not approving or not disapproving anything tonight.
It's just a recommendation, but we are at that point where we need to make a recommendation or not.
Well, I'd just like to let, make one statement, that, you know, if, while the ban might seem prohibitive, if you don't have this ban and you have your temporary moratorium, in between the time the temporary moratorium ends and the time you enact any other type of zoning, shops could go anywhere. So, you do not have any, you wouldn't have any control on where you, where you want to place them.
I think we understand, Steve was asking whether the moratorium could be extended, not whether, when it runs out. And I think the, the simple answer we've heard is, no, it can't be extended, so we need to do something, right? So, I think we're good there.
Well, I think, based on, you know, the Board of Health, the Chief of Police, you know, I'm convinced that, you know, to be, as you said, a little bit more preemptive, I would recommend the, the zoning change, you know, as is. Although I think eventually, as you said, it's going to be everywhere, but, but, you know, if this is what the town desires, and as you said, we did vote as a town 56%, is that right?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four. So, it's sort of...
And zoning the temporary moratorium, it was all in favor. It was not one...
That was kind of a fairly easy no-brainer.
I mean, you could almost view this vote as an extension of the moratorium, and I think, Steve, that's where you were going with this. I mean, you have an opportunity every year to reevaluate the zoning, and this is not a forever thing. I mean, this can be reevaluated. So, this year, because again, as Karen just said, if you don't pass this bylaw, and when the moratorium ends, we really have no controls, no zoning controls over there as it stands now. It would have to be there at Fall Town Meeting or the following Spring Town Meeting, get something together to regulate these establishments, but between that time, we'd have nothing.
You'd have local, you'd need a permit, so there's business...
Yeah, but no zoning, no zoning bylaws that would regulate this.
So, given that it's getting pretty late here...
Well, I would be in favor of recommending both zoning articles as written. That's my take. Although, I'm not 100% happy, but that's what I would go for.
Is that motion?
Well, no, I'm just telling you, I don't think we have to vote on anything, do we? We're just...
No, I'm not sure we do, yes. So, it's been moved.
Well, I said, that's my, my, where I'm standing. But I don't know, I want to hear what from Ben and Patricia.
I'm, I mean, if it's, if we're, we're going to vote both at the same, is that the way of proceeding?
Oh, we can do one and do the other.
I, I still am going to, I still feel the prohibition is a little overly stringent. I wish we would have kind of got the wording for the bylaws, and, you know, discussed it before it came to, fell in our laps.
Yeah, that's good.
That's my opinion. So, well, let's take each one individually. How about the article, what article is this? The article to extend the Village Business District and Village Business Overlay District?
I would highly recommend.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. How about the article to, to support the prohibition on marijuana establishments?
Based on the, the Chief of Police and the Board of Health's recommendations, I would be on it, or I would be in favor of supporting the article.
Do you second on that? I will second, if somebody else will. All those in favor of supporting the ban?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it's two to two. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And Karen, we need to actually write this report up.
Yeah, because you have to actually give this report at town meeting, so I will, I will, I'll tweak the wording based on tonight's discussion.
Thank you. By the way, I asked way too many questions. Looks like there's one extra for you guys. I was reading comments like that. You know what I'm talking about? Yeah. Let's start out there, we need to fix the... Good evening. Sorry we're a little bit late, but we did make it. This is the continued public hearing for the Residential Cluster Special Permit for Eastside and Situate. I'll start out just by noting that two members of our, our board are not with us tonight for particular reasons, but it is the intent that they will review this meeting minutes and/or video and file a Mullen Rural Certificate. We're hoping we can keep everything together here and get to the, to the finish line on this thing, so I think that's where we, where we would like to go tonight, is to try to get all of the remaining issues addressed, if possible. If there's something open, we'll obviously have to, have to get, get that as well. But I think where we want to try to go is make sure we've got a list of what's left to be addressed and, and address those as we can going forward. The, and I note that we also received some additional comments, both from the proponents and from the public. I think everybody's had a chance to review. I saw some response letters and stuff, so we've got that. I want to make sure we just address that as well as we go forward. So, my, my thought here is that we can try to walk through the, sort of the open items that, that we have on our list. If you have a list of things that are still open on your end, we would entertain discussing those as well.
Okay, if I can just introduce everyone?
Sure.
Start out, yeah, I'm Dylan Berger, I'm here with Jeff Delisi. And I'm also here with, from Toll Brothers, Dave Bauer, Scott Mincelli, and Dave Buckley. We also have with us Kevin Kline, Mark Manganello, Jim Ash, and Karen Forgot. And since our last meeting, you've received, well, you received Horstley and Witten's comments. Karen's been kind enough, she sat down with Jeff Delisi and myself, went over several things. And during the course of this discussion, actually, Dave Bauer and, you've seen our written responses relating to the Proven Runnings group. And actually, earlier this week, Dave Bauer and Scott Mincelli actually had a meeting with their spokesman, and we're informed about that, because there's some, there's some other actions that probably that you're not aware of that we're going to, that we're going to pursue, which I think will be positively received by the board.
Is that something we should do now or a week later?
Well, we can, as a matter of fact, we can...
We have a number of items on our list, some of which might overlap.
Well, why don't we, why don't we get those, because I think they probably will overlap.
So, let me do that, and I have on my list this actual comment letter, too, so I'm just making sure we get that.
Are you going over this list here?
Yeah, okay. Yeah. So, I, I, I'll start with some of the follow-ups from last week. We got your write-up, sort of the, the summary of the, of the purpose document or goals and objectives, and how, how this project search fits into the Residential Cluster Special Permit. I appreciate you doing that. I think that was very helpful. I will, I will sort of turn it over to the board if you have any specific comments on it, on it, Pat?
No, most of it, it's clear.
Ben? I didn't have anything specific. I just was very, the exercise of writing out the narrative was helpful to, you know, for me to digest everything and kind of analyze it, but at this time, I don't have any specific call-outs from, from that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay. Yeah, I thought, I thought it covered everything that we were hoping that it would, and I think there was a good discussion about the, sort of the purpose versus the sort of special permit, sort of requirements, if you will. I do note that ultimately, we're, we're going to be working on findings of fact and then on a decision, and that decision includes sort of a general statement about whether the project's sort of in harmony with all the bylaws and stuff. But I think we have enough information, at least it's my feeling, to, to move on from that particular topic, but I wanted to make sure everybody had an opportunity to ask any questions.
I agree with Ben that it was very helpful to have the narrative, you know, going through each individual topic.
Yeah, it was easier than trying to piece together the slideshow, you know? And I think it'll be helpful as we, as we move forward on this. The second item on my list was construction phasing. I see we got a new construction phasing document.
I can interject just one second on links. That's, one of the things I'm looking, Karen has had an opportunity to discuss with the board. This past week, one of the things is kind of, in conjunction while we're pursuing with the Planning Board, all of these issues, substantially, most of the issues from a conservation standpoint, we handled with them, and at their request, we had continued this for a period of six or seven months. And one of the suggestions was, why don't we kind of re-engage and make sure we have everything? So, there was a public meeting last Wednesday, of which a few of the Planning Board meetings, the towns, Horstley and Witten's consultants, Karen, Conservation Agent or whatever, where they reviewed all of these things. But construction, construction sequencing was one of the topics of conversation there, so I don't know if Karen's had a chance, but as we get into this...
No, I don't think we talked about that. Does it change what's been produced at this point, or...
No, it was just explanation, I thought we'd just bring out the one thing, which is probably, when you look at our sequencing. Number nine, because one of the, was commenced construction of modeling units, because one of the questions is, where are these? As you come in on Hatherly Road, there'd be the first four units on the right-hand side, and one of the, kind of the back-and-forth questions is, where is this vis-à-vis any remediation? And there is no remediation in, in that area whatsoever. And so, one of the thought processes was, at the outset of this, probably while the infrastructure is going on simultaneously, or whatever like that, they're probably going to start construction of the modeling units and also the clubhouse, which is in the area where there is no remediation or any of those type of issues.
But that will be done after the remediation work is done?
No, it'll be done, there is no remediation work in that proximity, so the remediation, I'm just looking at the sequencing there that we...
You have it afterwards. You say environmental remediation.
What we learned at that meeting was, multiple items are going on at one time.
Okay.
So, that doesn't mean that you can't condition that all the remediation be done first, but multiple items are going on at one time. In the existing entrance at Hatherly Road, where the existing paved entrance that goes into the site is going to be the initial construction entrance into the site, and that's where actually there's...
Does that road get ripped up?
Of it, yes, eventually it does, but that's where, you know, a lot of the concrete is by there that's going to have to be crushed, et cetera. That's going to be the initial construction entrance. And, and most...
I guess I was just getting to the fact that there's a certain amount of remediation, and I think as we've talked about it, sort of the conversation was always that remediation work would be done before construction began on the units, and it sort of looks like the sequence is that way, but you're telling me that's not the case.
They'll be going on, they'll be going on at the same time, remediation work will start, but we want to start, these aren't units for sale or anything, they're strictly for, for market. Right. And so...
What's the proximity of the remediation work to these things?
Jim?
The, I don't have a figure up that shows the...
Where are the four units?
First, first four on the right.
First four on the right when you...
Yeah, as I can from Hatherly Road.
Got you, okay.
Is these guys?
Yeah, yeah.
The excavation work... So, is that road predominant over here? That's not the first, is that the existing driveway right there?
No.
No, it's not, right?
No.
So, you're going to come in further on the south of that drawing and go all the way over then?
Right.
Is what you're planning to do? And, and then the remediation work with respect to all that is, I'm sorry, I missed it?
Yeah, there are like four locations, but they're essentially over here.
Okay.
Larger ones here, smaller ones are in the vicinity of those original older historical buildings.
And they don't obstruct the access to those four units or anything like it? I mean, they'll be blocked off or fenced off or whatever?
There's also some soil removal on the opposite side of Hatherly Road, which also would be affected by that proposed work.
Okay.
How long do those remain model units? Basically, almost until everything's sold, and they're the last ones to be sold, or...
If everything, Dave Bauer with Toll Brothers, if everything goes as planned, that's typically how it works. Sometimes if the market changes and drives us towards a different style of home, maybe we might build a second model park, but that's not something we hope happens. So, typically, we would build the models, decorate them, and they would be the show homes for the life of marketing the project, and then one of, one of the last units to, or buildings to convey.
Okay. One of the other thing, and I know there's a lot of pieces, which I just want to bring to the board, it probably isn't a good time, but just to kind of roll these out so I don't forget them. One of the things we were talking with Karen about also is, is part of having to do with the selection, it's part of the things that we're presenting, and hopefully by next time before the boards will all be done and finished, is the Toll Brothers are going to, are going to build the recreational facility behind Wapatack School. And the only reason I'm saying that, not that it has to do with the Planning Board, but that is to access that, so you're not coming over Tilden Road. What would happen is, even though Phase Two, when we say we're not going to start Phase Two, we are going to want to put a hall road in there, because when we're building that field behind there, it makes sense to access it through the property as opposed to accessing as opposed to accessing it through Tilden Road. And where the sequencing of that is, when at least talking with the town officials, that'll be built probably, and I'm not sure where it is, probably not this July, but maybe a year from July, because they need to have it built during the period when kids aren't in school.
But that would mean you would be into Phase Two?
Well, we're not going to construct Phase Two, but what I'm saying is it makes, at least I'm talking to the town, it makes sense just to have a road through Phase Two for the purpose, just for the purpose of building that wall field.
Is it going in the same place that the proposed road has gone? Or is it a different road altogether?
This is just a hall road, isn't it?
Yeah, it would just be an access road.
Just an access road, that's all.
So how does it get managed with respect to drainage, runoff and all that stuff?
It doesn't. It doesn't get paved or anything.
Yeah, but you're going to cut a road through. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, remains dirt.
Won't be filled, it won't sort of isolate drainage areas and things like that?
I think it's fair to say that it all has to get permitted and it's just conceptual at this point. So I think, you know, we can't start evaluating or discussing where that road may be or the sequence, because we don't know for ourselves yet. But we've been asked to consider that type of an amenity and we're open to it and we're working on the concept. But it's going to have to be permitted separately from this project.
So I would say that that would have to be a condition here is that I'd want to see the proposed, whatever road it is.
No, understood. I'm just mentioning it now. So I know on Monday, we're going to be submitting a lot of conditions for review. And what I'm saying is, one of the things is on Phase Two, because we're aware of the fact that Phase Two doesn't commence until it's appropriate time, except for that 25-foot lops a little bit. That's another thing. Or if we're building an amenity here, obviously you'd have to approve it. Because the bottom line is, if you don't want it, then this is a municipal benefit. We can have the trucks on Tilden Road, but the town's preference is that you're the only media that's going to confirm it.
And just for clarification, if I may, if I remember right, Phase One was actually this whole thing here. This would start Phase Two right here. Is that correct? Remembering that correctly? So you're talking about, at this point, this would already be Phase One, there'd be some access road to get back here?
Yes.
I didn't mean to go off topic, I'm just...
But the boy may want to think...
I guess what my point is, is that it's fine to suggest that as that's what the town would like. But the town would like to do that in a way that doesn't affect the stormwater management and all of that on this site as well. So I would say, you know, conceptually, that sounds fine.
Well, that's fine. And I understand that's not a cod blanch, I understand.
Right. So the only thing I would say about the remediation work is that will begin before you begin the actual construction of the model homes?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, why don't I segue into two other things? And again, we all get in the...
Are we done with that?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that once we start the remediation, we're going to go through and get it done.
This is the remediation issue.
Yeah.
All right. And Dave, I don't know if you want to speak to it or...
Well, I want to finish to make sure that you have a clear understanding is that the remediation, you know, there are many tasks that in our eyes are considered, you know, first top priority and they work in tandem. We intend to start the remediation as soon as possible, immediately, as a first order of business. Likewise, in tandem, we'd like to go pursue the model home and the model homes and the clubhouse, first order of business. But one may move faster than the other. I would predict that remediation will move faster than home building, because we have to go through the permitting process with the building department. And we have to make sure that we have a roadway to get to those units. But without a doubt, the remediation is intended to start as soon as we can start it after we have our permits, regardless of what other ancillary work we might be doing, like setting erosion controls on the other side of the site or whatever it may be.
I would just say that's what we, I would prefer is that you start that. It doesn't, they don't have to be completed simultaneously or any, I mean, they don't have to be done one before the other as long as you're working continuously on the remediation and you don't start and stop for six months and then...
Absolutely. One not late.
I would say it's just continuous action on the remediation.
But there will also be concrete crushing and demolition of existing structures going on simultaneously too.
We're going to get to that.
Right.
And that's really my point, is that if we wanted to talk about how many items might start up front, that's a separate way of sort of slicing construction sequencing. And there are a number of things that start up front, including, you know, the Tilden Road entrance and the Hatherly Road improvements. I mean, there are just many things that we intend to do right out of the gates, certainly not a single file line. But remediation is intended to start right up front and not stop until we're done.
Okay.
Did you want me to talk about the fencing or something?
Well, let's talk about, why don't we talk about, if we're talking about remediation monitoring, then we can talk about the concrete also.
Okay. Well, bear with me, because I'm jumping into the Proving Grounds group a little bit, just because it tackles a few relevant issues. In reviewing the letter submitted from the Proving Grounds group and sitting down with the spokesperson this week, we were able to identify a few things that not only address the concerns that that group has, but there are issues that we've talked about here in this hearing. And so there are a couple of things that we wanted to clarify or offer that haven't been discussed before. And one item that's come up before is air monitoring. Our RAM plan for the remediation specifies some air monitoring during the remediation work. And, you know, we have felt pretty strongly and have elaborated through our consultant that we think that that's the limit of the air monitoring that needs to take place. But in hearing the feedback, we'd like to propose that we set up a similar air monitoring program for when we break into Phase Two and start the earthwork along the property line next to the school. And for the first 30 days that we're doing earthwork over there, we're proposing that we do a similar type of air monitoring, just to offer some peace of mind to, you know, a couple of folks that have said, you know, why won't you just do a little bit of testing next to the school? We don't feel it's really necessary, but we're offering to do that for the first 30 days of moving earth over there in Phase Two. Another point is during the remediation, one specific question that came out from the Proving Grounds discussion, Proving Grounds group, was just the demarcation of the remediation areas and wanting to be comfortable that we might not have contractors erroneously driving through that area and tracking material or not realizing where they are on the site. So we, and correct me if I'm wrong, if it's not, if it's already in the RAM plan, but we're definitely planning on putting like an orange construction fence around all the remediation areas right up front, so that the access is very controlled and we might not have some vendor accidentally drive through the remediation area. Perhaps the biggest issue that has come up a number of times in this hearing, and then also an item raised by the Proving Grounds group, is the noise concern related to concrete crushing.
Yeah. I think that was brought up in our last meeting.
So we made inquiries with our site contractors and there's a substantial cost related to it. And just to give you a frame of reference, it's $100,000 type of cost. It's a six-figure type of cost, but we're willing...
Related to setting the baseline?
We're willing to not have a concrete crusher on the site and handle the concrete without a crushing machine. And that includes, you know, extra handling of the material, more labor involved in handling larger pieces of concrete. But we've talked it through with our contractor and we think there's a way for us to handle the material. Some of it is to be repurposed on site as clean fill, where it's, you know, reasonable to do so. Some of it still needs to be carted off and you, you know, you pay, it's a whole different cost structure to handling concrete in that manner, rather than crushing it and being able to use it as processed or whatever else. So that's something we're prepared to commit to, which is to not have a concrete crusher on the site.
Okay.
But there would be more trucks than taking that concrete away, potentially?
In some cases, but we still feel that we can use in, as clean fill, a large part of the concrete in certain areas where you just need fill, it doesn't need to be processed. So, you know, maybe there's more trucking, and Scott can correct me, but maybe there's more trucking now that we have to buy more material where we might have used the concrete under roads or around foundations, wherever it may be. There might be an added amount of trucking there. It's hard for me to quantify that. All I know is the dollars that were quoted to me when I made the decision to commit to it. But we thought that eliminating that noise of the crusher was something that we were hearing from multiple folks that were interested.
So as far as the concern of the board, I think that was at least our interpretation, one of the concerns relating to noise. And we've eliminated that concern.
Yeah, I think, you know, we went back and got the DEP regulations, noise and stuff. And it looked like you would have to establish a baseline and then have some measurement against it in order to sort of adequately do it, so.
Now, bullet point, that says noise monitoring, does that mean that there still will be noise monitoring or not?
Well, the conundrum you have is that just because you're moving, crushing somewhere else, that doesn't eliminate the DEP noise regulation, right? And so the same standards apply. I guess, and I'll ask you the question, does that mean that without the concrete crushing, you'll be able to stay within those standards?
I have no idea. Is, presumably yes, we're leaving out the trees or whatever it is. But the amount of noise here is going to be the same as any other subdivision that has been built in the town of Situate for the last 75 years.
Well, there's demolition here that a lot of these other subdivisions don't do, right? Particularly concrete demolition, you've still got to get it out of wherever it is, right? So I'm assuming you're busting it up. You're not trying to dig it up as a whole foundation or something like that, right?
We would expect to be able to comply with those regs.
Okay. Just realize that those are the regulations, right? So those are what would have to be established. And if you may have, you may want to think about this, but in order to, if there is a problem, in order to demonstrate it, you have to actually stop the noise creating function to establish a baseline so you can then measure what happens when you start creating the noise, right? So you'll have to deal with that if the issue comes up. But I think eliminating the concrete crushing is going to go a long way. But I don't know what the, I don't know what the noise is going to be like with the concrete removal. But so in any event, there's, there are, you know, DEP noise regulations that apply to the boundaries of the property and those will obviously be part of your overall permit requirements. They're just standing requirements anyway. Good. Anything else on the phasing? So your intent on the hall road would be sort of a soft commitment and then you would come back at some point in time with a modified design or analysis that shows whether this is feasible or not?
On which hall road?
On the recreation, on the back of the...
Oh, you mean for the half?
Yeah.
We don't anticipate doing that work until probably the year from July.
Yeah. So let's see. Well, we talked about remediation. Did we cover everything on remediation? I think we've looked at that and we've got a lot of comment back from Horstley Witten on the RAM plan. So I think we've covered the issues that have come up at least.
I think we've covered the major issues, yes.
Okay. Noise monitoring, we talked about. Surety. We needed to talk about the surety. I think what was, remind me what you originally proposed.
Well, we've changed from originally proposed.
Okay. Remind me what you changed.
Take it even simpler. Take it even simpler. I spoke today with Jim Boudreau and he has sat down and spoken with the treasurer. And they're amenable to what Toll Brothers' model protocol is. They issue a surety bond for the entire cost, or whatever the town consulting engineer is in DBW says, for the missing infrastructure, so a surety bond for a full amount, national company. One of the things at the last meeting we were talking about was kind of akin to the rules and regulations, subdivision control and 41U, was putting on a covenant on the prohibition of conveyancing. And then at some point, when a lot of the infrastructure is there, then substituting a surety bond. The Toll Brothers are willing at the outset to bypass the entire covenant. And we will post a full surety bond for the entire amount, albeit it's a much larger cost right up front prior to construction. And one of the things that we would do, because once we have our permits, they're going to, they're going to move with alacrity. So what would actually happen is, upon the issuance of this decision, we will actually, and that's why I want to ask the board's preference, because we also understand that the municipality has, particularly DBW has a lot on their plate, particularly with the most recent storm. And so what we would do is we would get our cost construction together and literally have that so that the towns will pay for the town's consulting engineers to actively do that. The DBW's been overlooked too, but I don't want to put anything on their plate. And such that we anticipate that we will have that remedy, that by the time of the expiration of the appeal periods and endorsement of the plans, we'll be able to put a bond in place at that.
So you'll pay for the evaluation of the, essentially the cost of the project?
Yes.
I got you. Okay. I think we've done that in the past. So that sounds like that would work. Any questions for that?
No. As long as it's okay with the town and the...
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's okay with the town treasurer and all the others.
You lawyers can get together and discuss it, make sure it's okay.
I have a note here, what sheets to record. Have you guys...
Karen was, Karen was kind of, I think Karen, we came down as obviously the overview sheets, the opening sheets, all of the drainage sheets. And actually, I think we enumerated them.
It says here in our notes, 3, 5, 49, 50 and 59.
Yeah.
It just sounds like a small subsection of a very massive roll of drawings.
The ones that I was recommending had easements and stuff like that, something that's binding on the applicant on. You know, you don't want every drainage plan, you don't want every, you don't want every plan recorded. These things had had app, had like easements, had conditions, something that was going to be in a condition, something that's not in a condition, but you had said you wanted, like the traffic, the traffic signal for the crosswalk. That sheet would get recorded because it has something that you wanted.
So ultimately, we'll decide that as we put together a proposed decision?
Yeah.
In terms of making sure we've got all the right drawings?
Right.
Two things also, which we will submit at shortly. One of the things in, on sheet 50, one of the things in, and this is kind of as a terrifying, any, the work that we're doing to improve the Hatherly Road drainage up to Sixth Avenue, anything that's in a municipal way, there isn't an easement, because it's municipal way. But as you come out onto Hatherly Road, there's a small portion on our side, on the west side of Hatherly Road, where there'll be an easement on our property. And we will reflect that on sheet 50 with the other easement. So it's fully inclusive. The other thing, just to point out, there's on this, on the recording, the sheets of the plan, that's, there's, and we'll make some suggestions, there's a little bit of a conundrum. This is land court, land, remember, and they have a whole different set of registration requirements that don't apply to things. And we were brainstorming with Karen about how to address some of these. So that's one of the reasons why we don't want to record all these sheets in a plan, because anything we do have to record, we actually have to get, just to explain briefly, is when you have any plan that's land court lands approved by the planning board, in a nutshell, that plan has to go to the Land Court Engineering Division in Boston. And what happens is, they don't even accept that plan. They draw a brand-new plan. And their time lag on that now is about three to four years. So what happens in the interim is these plans are approved. When they're approved, what happens for any plans to actually physically be recorded in the Registry District of Plymouth County, they have to be stamped and approved by the Boston Land Court Engineering Division. So that's how that happens. Because amongst other things, because these... Because, amongst other things, because these are not plans that are A&R plans or plans under subdivision control, the actual mechanism to get this on record will be that the plans will actually be an exhibit to the special permit decision. And then the special permit decision with Exhibit A, Plan Sheets 1 through 7, and in the decision, I'll show this linguistically, what I suggest, and linguistically, the other 62 or 67 sheets incorporated by reference filed in the Office of the Planning Board of the Town of Sittiwat, that's how the land court, I've already made a query with the chief attorney from the land court, and that's the way he wants to see it done.
And just curious, yeah, it does sound complicated. These, I think there's five, these five that you recommend, that's kind of been agreed upon, or did that come from you, Karen?
It's agreed upon from us.
It's agreed upon at the moment, but things could change as we write conditions.
Of course.
So, I mean, you know, we need to keep it flexible.
Yeah, and as a side, as Karen said, if there's other sheets that the board feels make sense, there will be, there will be no objection.
Okay. Thank you for the education. Trap routes. So I think we had finally agreed on kind of the route you were going to take, right?
Yeah, I think Karen had a suggestion.
The route we're not going to take.
Karen had a suggestion that basically, we are eliminating, we're going to say, they're going to truck there, you know how, what the predominant thing is, so that there's not an over-stress in any given neighborhoods, we're going to have routes that we will not take, kind of vis-à-vis the vinyl road. I think you said Manlot, Manhill, and Front Street, Karen?
Yeah, and we've added some more. So there's Booth Hill Road, Manlot Road, Manhill Road, Upper Tilden from proposed access beyond towards Wampatack School, Front Street, Greenfield Lane, Meeting House Lane, Vinyl Ave, Captain Pierce Road, Curtis Street, Arbor Way, Hollit Street.
I thought we had discussed not using, like Beaver Dam and then turning at Jericho. That was a bad intersection right there.
Well, we already know predominantly how it's going to go, and all those roads, they just named the road you wouldn't use.
Right, these are roads that you wouldn't choose because they're winding.
These are crossroads through residential neighborhoods.
Right.
Right.
I mean, they come off.
And we don't want, right, so we just.
You just don't want people cutting through them.
I appreciate you, I'd wait right.
I guess the reason, and I totally understand all that, I'm just saying that based on this prohibition, they could still drive down Beaver Dam and then turn left on Jericho.
That's correct.
And I thought we didn't want that.
But with the nature of the trucks, I would say, is, we've already schemed out the larger trucks, there's only a very limited way, but, so you don't get into technicalities if you have a van or, you know, a Ford 350, you're not going to determine those, those are vis-à-vis the same as, even though it's a truck, it's the same as a passenger car.
This list still has to be vetted through the fire department and police department.
Okay.
For final, they may add more, they may, but this has been vetted through DPW and building department.
Okay.
Karen, just one other I would consider adding is Stockbridge Road, because it's pretty narrow and people tend to just speed up it anyways. Just throwing that out there.
And you see, there's a lot of cross streets that go off of Stockbridge from here, so that, we figured that essentially eliminated Stockbridge, but if that's what the board wants, we can add Stockbridge to it.
Well, you could take Stockbridge all the way down to.
You could take Stockbridge to First Parish, but you couldn't do anything in between.
Right.
But if the board wants to add Stockbridge, we can add Stockbridge.
The only thing I'd consider, again, the more you add, the more concentration you're putting in there, with de facto, there are very, very few roads that large trucks are going to go, so in other words, they're not going to try to go down these, but all of a sudden, someone's drawing a Ford 350 down Stockbridge Road because they want to go to Dunkin' Donuts, I don't know if you want to create this type of conundrum.
Well, I would say, can we qualify this road limitation based on the type and size of vehicle, right? So any delivery, any haul truck, right, that's moving earth, moving concrete out now, all of that, I think we want those on the routes we talked about. But if somebody's, you know, driving an F-150 or something, they could probably come down any road, right? As long as it doesn't become, you know, a fleet of F-150s driving the same way all the time, you know, it doesn't become 200 of them, you know. But let's get the other input, and then we can zero in on this, I think. Encroachment on 60-foot buffer? Let's see.
Is Road F the phase two?
Roads, Road F turnaround, the Road B turnaround.
These are all, they don't fall into the bylaw, they're not.
There you have it, thank you.
There you go.
We just took the liberty of highlighting where the encroaching start with the buffer on the construction phase.
So are those the dark areas, you're saying?
The yellow.
The yellow is the 60-foot buffer. The green areas are part of the stormwater basins, which can be landscaped.
Uh-huh, right.
And the dark areas, you have, one of them is your entrance road into the site, but you obviously need an entrance road into the site. You have a little piece at the road there, and you have the fire department turnaround up at the end of Ermine, and you have the connecting road, and you have the cul-de-sac in Ermine Street that are in the 60-foot buffer.
What the bylaw actually says is, it says the 60-foot buffer only applies to residential structures and accessory uses, it says modify roads, roadways. So none of these things are structures or accessory uses to structures.
Could I point out also that the landscaping plan shows quite a bit of planting in some of these areas, particularly Road, oh boy, my eyes are shot.
B.
As in Bravo, we've got quite a bit of planting behind the end of that cul-de-sac and along that.
Which one is that, I'm sorry?
Along Marion, along Marion Street, that above Marion Street, yep.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think obviously the street access and those kinds of things, you have to do.
Right.
It's whether you're encroaching enough, but it's, as long as it's sort of planted or replanted there.
They do have an extensive planting plan, but they also include trails, and there are utilities in the buffer as well. But they do have extensive planting shown on the planting plan for a lot of the buffer area.
So what is the plan from a construction point of view for that buffer, then? Are you demarking that with a fence or something like that?
Well, we're in phase two, most of that stuff up the left is all phase two stuff.
I think what you're saying, it's a buffer, it's not a no, what do you, we say no-touch zone.
Yeah, because there's temporary disturbance and it's being replanted.
Right, but the objective is not to disturb it if you don't have to, right? So is there, so you want to avoid having trucks running through the buffer zone and all that kind of stuff, right?
There's a limit to work.
Yeah.
We'll have it staked out and marked, and we have a vested interest in preserving that buffer for ourselves. Another thing that we intend to do is to put some sort of a construction fence up along the property line to the school, just acknowledging that we might create an attractive nuisance, and we don't want kids to sort of slip through the woods and end up anywhere on the site. We love signage as well.
Radiation, keep out. Kidding.
Yeah, I think the objective is to protect a buffer where at all possible, right, and avoid, because the problem with a buffer is, once you wipe it out, it's hard to get it back, takes a while for it to grow back or whatever.
Well, Dave says vested interest is, any buffer that we disturb, we have to replant. So anything we can preserve, we want to preserve.
Yeah, it's just that if you have existing vegetation there that provides a good buffer now, if you disturb it or destroy it, even replanting it, it takes a long time for it to really come back and be a buffer again.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
But just curious, since we're talking about that, like with the construction, what I'm hearing is that there'll be like, let's say, basically right about here or something is the existing road, I mean, the existing road that's going to be used, as you said, to do those units initially when we talked about, I mean, that's going to go through the buffer too.
It already does.
I know. So I guess what I'm saying is, but then they're replanting that, so that's kind of a bonus, per se.
I would encourage you all to look at the landscape plans, they are extensive, but to determine, to see if you think that that's enough landscaping. It may mean that you want to add, say, 30 trees to be placed randomly after the site is all landscaped, so to enhance the buffer. But please, please look at the landscape plans before the next meeting. They do show extensive landscaping.
Okay. Pressure we talked about, determination of drain pipe is HCP or RCP? Did we determine that?
Well, two things. One, with the recent storms and hurricanes and all this stuff, I haven't had, DPW's been upside down and backwards. Our proposition of putting, that we're putting to this, and again, they're making recommendations, is, we feel that the type of pipe from the Toll Brothers is going to be a restriction on this as a perpetually private housing development, and that we want to use the type of pipe that is the industry standard, but any piping that is within the public way or outside of this, then certainly the DPW's recommended thing, we'd use that. The second issue, the only two open issues with them, was having to do with, which kind of was a question, I think there was a long discussion about this in, I don't want to misspeak, is that Irving Road, the 350 feet?
Ermine.
Ermine.
Excuse me. Is that, that does nothing to address, we can't, it's either one of two things, there is no place to loop this. On Ermine Road, we are by virtue of connecting to that, we're including, we're helping the water looping there, we will loop the water back on itself on phase two, it's a phase two issue basically. If they want to loop it back on us, we'll loop it back on itself, we don't think it's necessary, but certainly there's no scientific or engineering reason why putting 350 feet of anything in Ermine Road does anything to address that issue.
So, yeah, because that was the issue before, this is not installing a loop, right? When we were talking about the 350 feet.
Yeah, it does nothing.
Yeah, okay. And did we hear anything back from DPW on this?
No.
No, they've been upside down.
No.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, that's sort of their recommendation.
The first of the week after we threw this storm, I'm going to hopefully sit down with the head of the DPW and the head engineer.
They wanted it, they wanted it, the 350 feet, in lieu of looping back on itself, because they don't think looping back on itself does any, does any good. That was their logic.
Well, maybe in a situation where neither one does any good.
That was their logic, but, I mean, we haven't heard back from them, so.
Okay. Well, maybe something, we just put a condition on that it needs to get resolved, right?
Well, I think we can resolve it in the next month, I would hope we can.
As long as the weather cooperates.
Resolve it in the next month.
Right.
Okay. Well, I think both of those need to be resolved with DPW.
Right, but at the end of the day, I do point out, that's a recommendation, it's up to the board to decide.
Question came up, does the HOA protect the town if the town has to fix any infrastructure or roads? That was a question that, I guess you brought up, Karen?
Right, and so.
Is that a question that came from town council?
That's a question, I mean, I tried to compile all of your people's questions on the board, so I, it might have come from, I don't remember exactly where it came from.
Okay.
On the to-do list, we're waiting to hear back from town council, we will resolve this, because, one, that explicit provision is in the master deed, which was submitted some time ago, that's one. But the second thing, which we've corresponded on, but we haven't spoken live, is there was some confusion, the member of town council reviewed this, having to do with phasing, and what they, and what the misunderstanding is that phasing is mentioned in the master deed, has a statutory meaning under chapter 183A, which means that as a group of units comes into existence, and I won't get into how it works, there's actually a phasing amendment saying we're bringing in units 1 through 4, 5 through 8, and the reason is, it has to do with financing under Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, that's how you have to do it. But it has nothing to do with construction phasing, so that's a confusion.
Yeah, I think we talked about that last time, right?
Yeah. The third thing, well, we'll get out there, also, is one of the things the bylaw says, we have designated all the plan of what the open space is, and there'll be a condition in the permit which will suggest it will remain a perpetuity open space. One of the, in the homeowners association, by virtue, again, it's all esoteric stuff, but by virtue of committing the property under a master deed to chapter 183A, what it means is that all the common area, which is everything other than the units themselves, is owned by the association in perpetuity. It is not severable from the unit ownership, it isn't by law, all right? So the decision condition will incorporate that. One of the things that the bylaw says, albeit this is a bylaw that was established for single purpose 40 years ago, and has not been modified as, the whole rest of the bylaw's modified eight times, it says that there will be a restriction, perpetuity in the language is in there. What my suggestion is, is the town council is in the special permit decision, it explicitly says, because the special permit decision is in perpetuity also, it doesn't change, because it's the basis on which the zoning was established, that it verbatim tracks it, this property is subject to the restriction that the open space, remember, ba, 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 verbatim of what the bylaw says. And our opinion, that addresses that situation, but we'll make sure the town council.
Yeah, we'll run that one by town council, because I think the bylaw says one of, you need a restriction one of three different ways, right? And I don't know that it.
But it says the homeowners association, yeah, I read it very thoroughly, it doesn't say that you have to go to the state or anything, it just says a restriction enforceable by the town, if the homeowners association is owning it, which it is.
It's a different provision than what it was in the flexible, that the flexible that we recently discussed.
So.
The language is different.
The language is different, absolutely.
But if it's in the homeowners association.
It's a homeowner, right, it could mean the homeowners association.
Right, and the homeowners association has built into it the ability for the homeowners to change things, then.
Yeah, but that's not.
But this will be.
This will be a part of the special permit.
That it will be put in there to be preserved as open space in perpetuity.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it'll be in the special permit, which isn't all.
That's the open space, but on this bullet, when it says the town has to fix infrastructure and roads, is this, I'm just trying to understand that, is this bullet point the fact that if the construction, for some reason, it doesn't get complete, or the fact that after the fact, after it's already done, there's some need for the town to go and, I don't know.
It's a triple belt and triple suspenders, you know, in other words, the town has zero obligation to do anything, but if for some unforeseen reason, the town. unforeseen reason, the town wanted to do something, they could.
Well, they might want to do something to protect.
Health and safety.
Health and safety, or other infrastructure that's tied into this.
Correct.
Right, water, whatever, you know, they could want to do things.
Correct.
That makes sense.
As an immediate action, as an emergency action, and we just want protection against that, right?
Yeah, so the language is in the master deed in Section Five, the very last paragraph, Section Five. It's an easement for the benefit of the town situated for purposes of maintaining roadways, water distribution, sewer distribution, stormwater facilities, et cetera. So it's there, and it's been reviewed by Town Council, she didn't seem to have a substantive comment concerning that issue.
She didn't have any comments concerning the master deed.
Okay. I, I think this, this comment came up a little bit later in the approving grounds letter as well, is sort of who's in charge and how do we monitor and manage what's going on during the construction process. So I'd kind of like to hear a little bit more about what, what the plan is here.
Well, we, we, from our standpoint, there are as many layers as there could be in terms of monitoring. We, we have our own internal oversight structure, obviously.
Is there a single point of contact?
There is.
Who has overall responsibility for the project?
There really, there is, and in this case, he's sitting right here. And also Scott is in charge of the site development part of the project, but Dave Buckley is ultimately that one name that you can call for anything under the sun, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day.
Twenty-two hours a day.
Should, should that be something that's posted, like on a sign or public? I'm just thinking of like what happened with Morning Glories, where, you know, there was, the, the planning board had all these restrictions for construction, and supposedly, according to the bakery, you know, they were, they couldn't find the right person to contact, they talked to someone, it wasn't, so, you know, how do you go to that person?
Well, we, we handle that during the pre-construction conference. We get, we get this, we get all the contact information, and I think Morning Glories is a different situation. They were advised that if trucks were blocking, to call the police as the first line of enforcement. I mean, and then, you know, let us know too, but call the police, because they're the ones who have the ticketing authority.
Okay.
So we will have twenty-four hour contact information, that's part of the information that's collected at the pre-construction conference.
Okay.
I'm, I'm interested in sort of how do we coordinate as this process goes along, because there's a lot of sort of information and inspections or process that has to happen between the, the project and the town.
That was really the second part, was we have, just really, just for your information, we have our onsite team that's led by Dave Buckley, and we'll have construct, licensed construction supervisors, and Scott will be in charge of the site development, and will, he'll be contracting a licensed contractor to do the major site improvements. And then Scott can speak to, in terms of the town's supervision and inspection.
Yeah, sure, I think, you know, one of the comments in the proving ground letter was about unfettered access, and of course, we're, we're totally open to that, you know, if the Board of Health Inspector wants to come out on any given day, you know, they're welcome to. I assume that the planning board intends to have some type of, most times, we're funding some 53G account to have, whether it's Horstley and Witten or somebody else.
Yeah.
Conduct inspections of the site improvements as they're going in, so we kind of expect.
Well, I think we will want that, and we'll probably want to put together sort of a plan of what are all those things, because some of them may be more than just a site inspection. We've got a lot of requirements here, and we want to make sure they get implemented as we go, so we're not, after the fact, sort of having to deal with stuff that got missed.
There'll be a third, there'll be a condition for third-party inspector, and it's going to be all the items that are typically in the subdivision regulations, so that's drainage, sewer, water, and then anything else you want. You already have the requirement, they've already agreed that our, the town's licensed site professional can be there when they're doing excavation of the areas and agree upon all the limits, and then there'll be whatever the town wants for air quality monitoring and whatever we decide on noise. But the, the basic stuff, it's going to be the same as the subdivision regulations.
Right. I think it'll be dependent upon what ultimately all the conditions are.
Right.
The special permit. Okay. We talked about the, did we talk about the deed restriction for open space?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Deed restriction for over fifty-five?
In the master deed.
That is in the master deed.
And, and there's a, it's, all this language right in there, and what is, it's the federal, Dave Buckley, what is it, it's the Act of, FHAA.
Federal Fair Housing Act.
It's an amendment to the FHAA.
The bottom line is, is I, I've begun the process of, with Karen, and writing conditions or suggested conditions, and there'll be one in there that addresses this.
It'll, it'll be conditional permit referencing master deed.
And it's only one member of the household, correct?
One occupant. And no, no children under the age of eighteen can live except for a period of up to ninety days, so if you have a child visiting for the summer, that sort of a thing.
Okay.
Highly self-governed, I can promise you. You know, the residents really are intent on keeping that way for themselves.
Right. And then I guess the other one was just submitting for review the SWIP plan prior to construction, right?
Downly condition.
Okay. Couple other things that were brought up was really about, I don't know if the Board of Health is probably not here now, was about irrigation wells. And I don't know where you stand on that, but are you pursuing the process of permitting those, or?
Yep.
We are.
Okay. And we may have asked this, but I don't remember the answer, how many wells are we talking about?
Well, as far as what we're applying for, how many we ultimately need. Right now, we have applications in for the, the single-family residences, as well as eight for the main body, the site has applications. However, it's all yield-dependent. If we drill one well and it, it produces enough yield for the whole site, the answer may be one that we ultimately use. You really can't tell until after you drill the well and determine what yield you're going to get out of it.
Our water withdrawal permit is already conditioned on no use of municipal water or anything other than household use.
Right.
Condition on that.
Are these, are these like deep wells, artesian wells kind of thing, or?
Bedrock wells.
Yeah.
And the Board of Health does have all, has, has an application in for all that.
But you're applying one for each resident, so it's like a hundred and forty-two?
No, it's one for each of the, the, the single-family homes, the A and R.
Single-family, okay.
And then eight for the condominium, but we would.
Eight for the whole complex.
We would expect less than that, typically.
The Board of Health just recently, like, within months, as opposed to years, has new, has regulations governing the wells, which they didn't, I don't think they even had any prior to this, so.
Oh, they didn't, but they have all new breaks, yeah.
Yeah, so, and the standards are really pretty strict.
They have to make drinking water standards, basically.
For irrigation.
For irrigation.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess we're still waiting for the Conservation Commission in terms of, where do you stand on that?
We were supposed to meet for this Monday, but the meeting was canceled because of the weather. So the meeting was on, meeting with them on this following Monday, reschedule all the meetings for Monday. But we're confident that we've addressed all the issues, which they have, and what we're really doing is, we've actually been in a holding mode eight to nine months now. And because we don't want to do is to close that hearing and have there be a planned tweak here, such as we have that real to the process.
Okay.
So what we anticipate is when this decision is voted, at the following meeting of the Conservation Commission, we will set the order.
And I'm coordinating with the Conservation Commission all the time.
And the mitigation agreement, that's what you were referring to with the Board of Selectmen and the Recreation Fields, as part of that, right?
Part.
Right. And what's going on, I know a while back, you talked about this piece?
Yeah, what, what is happening is just, again, the selectmen matter, but just to give you the transbalancing on that is, the land that is to be, that is not, which doesn't constitute the building lots, we are offering that to the town. The town, the selectmen are making the decision on that, and what the statutory provisions are, is the town can accept it, subject to the care and custody of the Conservation Commission, and it can just be done, but it restricts it, and as everyone's aware, there's been a lot of issues about who owns the land and all this on numerous parcels and this, so we're deferring to where the selectmen have it. And what will happen, in all likelihood, if the selectmen warrant under just the general care and custody of the town, what will happen is they'll bring a warrant out, it'll go on the fall town meeting, and bring it to, to accept that. And so the intention is, is to give that to the town.
Okay. Okay. I think that was kind of the, the list we had, and then I know we got the, the letters from the friends of the proving ground in Irving, and we got letters back, I guess, from all three of your consultants in, in various areas. And it sounds like you've had a conversation with them at this point.
Yeah, and actually, it's, it's almost here.
Uh-huh. Just let me make sure I understand, so you've already had a conversation, you've agreed to, to do a few additional things that we talked about earlier, was there anything else?
I was able to touch on everything from our meeting. We went over every item in the list, some of which we just needed to clarify or elaborate on, but I've been, I've touched on the items that, that we've agreed to offer.
Okay.
I thought, I thought of one additional thing today in going over things, bicycle parking, is there going to be any bicycle racks? The TDM.
Yes.
The TDM.
I think we put them at the clubhouse.
The TDM reported.
I think they're on the plans at the clubhouse.
Okay, then I'll double check that again, okay.
If, if they're not shown on the plans, they're certainly easy to add, a number of functionality type of features that we haven't really specced out yet.
Okay, no, I was just going over Vanessa's letter again, and so that's just, you know, okay.
I think they might have made on the landscape set for some reason.
Okay, all right.
And I think we had two, two comments that came in from Horstley Witten as well, right, on the stormwater review.
Right, the stormwater review, they're, they're happy that the stormwater meet rate and volume, and I believe recharge requirements.
Right.
So they're, they're pleased that the stormwater is pretty much, is in.
Right, it sounded like they were pretty much.
Right.
In, in agreement with everything.
They're, they're in agreement.
There were one or two sort of items that I assume had been discussed, but that were, that was in their letter.
Right, they're, they're in agreement with the stormwater.
Okay.
The other thing, just, well, Karen, Derek, are you up?
Nope.
All right. Just the other thing, one thing we did, we received a letter, and I discussed it sometime or again with the storm, yeah, storms, if you have any chances, I explained it before with Block Bollinger, a letter about clubhouse parking, and just to explain to the board, but we'll have the, it will have his concurrence, we've already had the discussion some time ago, we're going to refresh everyone's recollection, is the parking, two things, one, the clubhouse is for the people who are here. Our parking requirement is, I don't know how much it is, but certainly more than a hundred spots, probably, each unit has four spots, and so we have a gross excess of parking, there's more than that, and they put the number of parking spaces there that they thought were, in other words, we thought were appropriate for this, but the vast majority of people in here are using, in other words, are walking, they have their own parking, so the number of parking spaces is, you know, the enormous excess of parking spaces that we probably actually need.
So are you, where was that leading? Are you suggesting that you're?
No, no, what I said is, I, because of the, the weather, I will clarify that with Block Bollinger.
Okay, all right.
That's all.
Got you, all right. Let's see, I, I think that was everything in my list, let's, if nobody on the board has a comment, let's open it up to any public comment. A lot of people, yes?
I'm, I'm still concerned.
Could you identify yourself?
I'm Elise Klein, six seventy-five Chief Justice. And I'm, I guess the bells go off in my head, especially about the sinking of wells, because one is water, is potable water is a very sensitive issue, but two, because I remember the difficulty we had sinking wells, for instance, on the Green Estate, and this was when I was on the Water Committee, and I don't know if you have contacted the people on the Water Committee to get their spin on that. I think they have a very good knowledge of what's going on with the water table and the underlying strata there. You may want to think about that.
Well, they've been, they've been copied in on everything that.
Oh, they have?
Yeah, so we've made sure that the.
Okay, you've heard, you've heard from them?
Water Resources Commission is clued in, so.
Okay.
And it did lead, it still led to the conversation about the overall capacity of the town to provide ongoing new connections to the water supply system, and a part of kind of an outfall of all this is, is a proposal to do a much more sort of comprehensive evaluation of the town's water supply system, and how we determine whether we have capacity for new hookups or not. I think that in the past, it's been a fairly rudimentary approach to, to make that decision, and it probably needs a, a little more sort of analytical thought and, and kind of a consistent approach to do that, so that has been something that I know Karen, Brad, and others have been, and along with the, the selectmen as well, have been working to put together a more comprehensive evaluation that addresses both water and sewer. And so we're looking forward to actually getting that going, I think.
Right, in addition, we had separate water and sewer studies done for this project to show that there is capacity for, for this development.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Kathy Flynn-Widlin, and we live down on Oceanside between Sixth and Seventh, kind of like Route Zero. We have been to a couple of the early meetings, and I just wanted to clarify what I think I'm hearing now in terms of some of the evolution of this big project. And one is that, you know, as we drive up and down Haveling, there's massive amounts of water on Haveling, and it flows down Sixth and Seventh, and I know there's been perk tests done, I know there's a number of different things that have been done, and I think what I heard earlier is that you have a drainage remediation plan, but I'm not sure that it encompasses that. I mean, we drove by tonight and took photos of it, because it's, it's like a little geyser that's coming up, and there's a lot of water that's coming down. We don't know what that water contains, we don't know if there's contaminants in it, we also have floodwater on the other end of our land, so our concern is that type of remediation that's happening at that point on Haveling and from the east side of Haveling. The other question, I, I hope, as you were talking about, I never heard the tail end of it too, is that we park at the top of Sixth when it floods, and are you offering us parking spots in the spot when it floods? We need to know that, and if we need a separate sticker, you know, let us know, we have our other stickers, we're happy. And I think the, the third thing is really the environmental impact for the marsh, and I was thinking that I was hearing that that was going to be in perpetuity given over to the town.
That's correct.
Okay. That makes me feel a little better, but that means we have to work with the town, because that is a major drainage area for when it floods. We can't tell you how happy we are with our seawall. It has made an enormous difference, and we love it, but we also need drainage, and that marsh is a ma- that marsh is a major implication for us surviving the floods. And part and parcel of the construction that's going to happen on the east side of Hatherley is an impact to that marsh. And we want the town to be fully aware and work with the Conservation Commission, other engineering, environmental engineering, to make sure that that is an appropriate drainage system for our community. We're a tight neighborhood, and we rely on it.
Thank you. I guess I will go back to just the first comment you made about the remediation effort and the water drainage effort, and I will let, if you have somebody here who wants to address that.
Well, can I, can I just try and make it succinct? Dave Bauer with Toll Brothers, I certainly don't want to shrug off your question, but it, there's really a lengthy, lengthy answer to those issues, and I really would encourage you to watch the meetings that have been recorded, because there are great presentations by some of the folks in the room that really speak to different parts of the site, exactly how much water is going here or there, both through the Conservation Commission and through the planning board. So I don't mean to not answer the question, but there's, there are great answers in those meetings. But generally speaking, the challenge with this site, and one of the reasons frankly I think it hasn't been developed, and one of the challenges we've had for now three years, is managing the stormwater properly. And the way I would say it put very simply is, you know, we have a high groundwater table, as all of you know better than we do, because you live there, we have tough soils, which you're probably familiar with, and the regulations in town, to the town's credit, are the most stringent that you can have from an engineering standpoint, where we have to prove out that we are not sending more water in any direction off the site. And likewise, we have to prove out that we are not sending less water to the resource areas like the wetlands. So that balancing act is incredibly difficult, especially when you have a high water table and poor soils, and that's why you see things like more stormwater basins than you might normally see on a site, larger basins, it's all driven by that balancing act. So the, the short answer is that we've had to answer to that very high standard and prove out from an engineering standpoint that we are managing stormwater the best way, and the, and the town's peer review engineer, Horstley Witten, has evaluated that, weighed in on it, we've made changes, it's been many, many months of that back and forth, and, and the recorded meetings really would give you that, that detail.
I know, I give a little finger on it from another colleague of mine this year, none of you. And I guess one of, one of the key points that I just wanted to make is that I feel that it's also incumbent upon the town to create a partnership with Toll Brothers, and we have created, I think, a great relationship with a number of the engineering companies that have worked with us on the seawall to try to really look at what this impact is. Every storm tells us something different, and I just want to see that that partnership continues as well, so I appreciate that.
Could I just say that it's been carefully, very carefully looked at, as was just stated, especially with the groundwater along Hatherley Road, that has been considered in the drainage design extensively, and they have added significant drainage improvements to correct that situation. And also that, in addition to the special permit that's for the residential cluster district, this is all, there will also be the stormwater permit issued simultaneously, it'll be the special permit and stormwater permit, and they have to find, we, the town has to find that they met the rate and volume, which I have stated that they, our consulting engineer has stated that rate and volume is met for the whole site, including the 10 single-family homes.
Thank you. Yes?
Phil Jacob, 29th dollar. The water mains, the dead end, the, yep. What about B and G, isn't that considered a dead end?
I'm sorry? The water mains, the dead end, where?
You're talking about the Street F, I believe it is, up in the?
You're just up in F, I think everything else is looped around, so there aren't any other dead ends.
Everything else is looped.
Everything else is looped, so we're really only talking about that one sort of outlier on, on Road F over past.
Remind us if we're going to be looped.
Yeah, the plans reflect that.
Yeah, yeah, we've gone back and forth on that a little bit, but that's where we ended up.
Yes, looped.
Any other questions?
I just didn't get an answer to the parking.
Where do you mean, which park, like at the community center?
At the top of Sixth, inside, and we park along where no one cares.
Kind of where that little road is right now, right? That won't be available anymore.
There won't be available, yeah.
I don't have a, I don't have a great answer on parking, because we are talking about private property, private condominium association, and then 10 single-family lots owned by somebody else at some point.
They're private lots in the side of it.
So it's something that I think maybe we could talk about when we get out there and talk about where you, where your issues are and where you typically have to park, and where is the right of way, meaning where do you have a right perhaps to park because you're on the town's road? And maybe we, in understanding your situation, maybe we can disclose things to our buyers in a way where we set expectations upfront. And I just don't know how that would shake out yet, but we can, Dave can sit down with you and talk it through.
Okay. Yes?
Mark Corden, 58, Kennesaw Road. My questions relate to the proximity to Wampatuck School, and I know this has somewhat been addressed in terms of traffic patterns for the trucks, but I'm wondering, has the school committee or the superintendent weighed in on this discussion at all? Because it will impact the students. We think that construction will be going on.
We haven't received any comments from, I mean, we've requested input from everybody in town, but I guess they haven't felt like, felt the need to interject any comments at this point. I don't know where that, how that affects the discussion about the field though, at Wampatuck. I assume they've been involved in that conversation?
Well, that's a board of selectmen conversation, so, I mean, that's, you know.
I imagine that the board, the school board's been involved.
I would imagine, but that's a board of selectmen.
Been consulted anyway, so.
That's a board of selectmen issue.
I don't know, yeah. So you'll, you'll have to probably take that up with the?
It's just surprising to me, yeah.
We, this has been a long process, and it's a lot of information, and people are very busy, and it's been difficult at times to get input even from our own, you know, town departments and stuff, so I have to say, we haven't gone chasing the school department to say, hey, where are you? But we've notified everybody, and they, they obviously are, are aware of the project, pretty sensitive to it, I would imagine, but nobody's provided any input to it.
And as a follow-up question, what happens if the traffic of the trucks and the construction is impacting the school and the learning environment and recess and being out back there? I'm just, you know, I know I'm talking maybe two years down the line, but when Phase Two begins, because it's close.
Well, I imagine you'll still be in contact with, with the town as we go through this, you know, you can't, can't build this site without having, having the trucks and having the construction activity on site, so.
Well, and we have.
The challenge, I think the notion of putting a fence up there is a good idea, to sort of make it not a place where people go hang out or try to, you know, try to hang out in the construction, so, out there. But beyond that, I don't think we have anything identified. There was, there was a comment, I think, in one of, one of the letters that came in about, you know, is there a possibility of having crossing guards stationed, you know, at the, at the construction entrance on, I think it was on Tilden during the school hours, but I don't know where, did you have that conversation?
We're, we're looking into some sort of a push-button type of crossing light, where anybody who's walking across the entrance could push the button, and it would blink so that anybody entering or exiting the site would see that flashing crosswalk type of sign, so we're looking into something like that. And, and I guess my other comment about school is that, you know, there are always trade-offs, we, just to, for those that don't fully understand it, we, we self-impose an age restriction on this community, the zoning does not require age restrictions, so we, from a high level, have chosen to not allow children in this community and therefore address the impacts to the schools that we know is a major issue. And we've also been asked by the town to consider a ballfield for the school, so we're hoping that the positives outweigh the negatives.
And also the, the construction trucks, Tilden is restricted, yeah, so they won't be in front of the school.
Right.
They can't go all the way down.
Right, they can't, they can only go as far as the access road.
Right.
Right. Yes?
St. Petrowski, 119, Hatherley Road. Just as, as you guys were talking, where will the staging area be for the single-family homes with the trucks and the contractors, et cetera, given, I guess they'll just kind of move along if they report?
On site, on each lot, on the private property.
No, it'll be on the site of the actual building.
Okay.
Because you're not, you're not going to bring, not going to build 10 houses at once, right? You're building them sort of as they're, as they're ordered or purchased, I would imagine.
There's plenty of room on these lots for us to, use the lots for staging.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, great. I think we're, I'll actually open it up to the board members here, too. Anything back?
Not right now.
Good. No, not this time. Richard?
No, I can't think of anything, I think we went through most of the bullet points that we were obviously referring to.
Yeah, we're getting down to the, to the, you know, final items here, I think where we would want to go, and we've already sort of started this, is the development of the findings of fact and, and the permit conditions. And I think that's kind of going to be our focus going forward. We do want to try to get to this decision, obviously, before we get to another.
May 10th.
May 10th, right, because that's when Richard's leaving, and we have now, it will now be three people who have, who have filed a mullin' on this, right? So we can't really afford to lose anybody else.
Sure, so if I could just speak to that for a moment, two things, and the meeting which we'll continue to have meetings with Karen is, Karen's done a super job with the draft finding of facts and whatever, a couple of things, though, as I said, we will, we're waiting for this meeting on, on Monday, anticipate we'll have substantially all of proposed conditions, which are, as you can understand, are rather voluminous, and, which we've crafted, everything will submit, will be things that, from our standpoint, I find, obviously, there's something, so in other words, I think we're going to fast forward on a lot of issues. One of the things, understanding that obviously is subject to that, is part of these, we want to tweak and pull into the findings of fact, so I don't know, from, from a board's standpoint, subject to knowing there's drafts, if we can, in other words, if Karen can coordinate with us and let us see these things, I want to make sure linguistically that the findings of fact, that the town has understanding that they may be changed or whatever, that these conditions, in other words, I don't want to mix apples and oranges, I want to make them so, like, I have a strong feeling that, subject to the board's substantive issues, procedurally, these will be 90-odd percent dead on, and we'll have those, as I said, on Monday, so it isn't something that'll be drifting in two weeks from now. And so with, with that in mind, and as, as Steve, as you said, we're critically aware of the procedural conundrum, and we're very, we're very concerned about that as the board is, is because through some act of God, a health issue or something, we could be out of the box after 11 months here, and, you know, virtually a constructive approval is what it would be. And so with that in mind, we'll, as far as we'll get all these things in at the next meeting, I think Karen proposed on April 12th, Karen?
April 12th.
Right.
Yeah.
Is, we'd very much like to be in a position to go through, because right now, if there's any other information other than what we've discussed, we'd like to get the findings of fact, go through these conditions, and if at all possible, if we're in a position, if we're in consensus there, to vote. And because I'm just, I'm just really concerned, is, you know, obviously, without getting into health issues, health issue's always predominant for everyone, but in other words, it'd be a shame if, after this great concerted effort of everyone, if we ran into a procedural conundrum, and we're very, very close.
We're concerned as well.
Oh, no, I understand, yeah. I don't, I don't mean to state the obvious.
Yeah. And, you know, I think the, you know, we don't, we don't object to providing you with, you know, the draft on these things, but we'll, we'll want to look at it first, and, and we'll work out a schedule, and I think Karen will have to manage the schedule on how, how we can release that information, right?
Sure.
But I think obviously the board will want to have a chance to look at it first.
Maybe one of the suggestions I think you had last time was like, so we don't get into, was it 90 and vinyl, or the development there where we kind of were amending the findings of facts and amending the conditions that night as we went through everything? So they're all done beforehand, and we have time to review them, yeah?
Absolutely, we'll commit whatever resources we need to get these rapidly and to respond rapidly. I understand that, because it seems to me right now, after this meeting, 99% of any issues and information have been input, and it's a matter of having the decision and conditions reflect.
So if we did the?
Yeah, but I, I think what we want to do is get a stable version that we could then share with you, you could provide us, you know, a red line version of some kind, if we have comments or whatever.
Yeah, we'll have, yes, we'll do that right away.
But we want to get to that stable version.
Right.
We're done.
So you will have, you will have, per mounds, all our conditions, in other words, so we'll review this kind of thing.
Okay. Well, I think that, that makes sense, I think that's where we need to go, I'm going to leave it to Ms. Joseph to manage that sequencing and process here.
And just to throw out a procedural question to Karen, if it ever got to a point where we were under a crunch, could we throw in another planning board meeting before May 10th? Is that potentially possible?
We could if we had to, but I think that.
No, no, I'm saying this only as backup Plan B, like, heaven forbid, as you said, you've gone through the?
Well, I have to do when we travel.
Well.
No, because here's the reality, if for some reason Steve, Bill, and Ian cannot make a meeting, we cannot hold that meeting, it's as simple as that.
Right.
Well, I'm just thinking of like Plan B, that's all.
We're, we're keeping on top of it every day so that, you know, we can make, make the deadline, we know what the last possible date is, and we would like to try to get it done well before the last possible date. The decision will be vetted through the town in the next month and with the applicant after it's vetted through the town.
Just so you know, I'm coming back from Hong Kong early so I can be at that meeting on the, is it the 12th or 13th?
12.
12. I know, well, I know it's a Thursday, so I think I'm coming back on Wednesday. Don't get, don't get in trouble.
We're going to answer a couple, go ahead. The international dateline.
Yeah, the 12th here, not there.
Exactly.
No.
April 12th.
Okay, I think we're at a point where we need to continue this.
I think, is the continuance in there, folders? Yep.
Also, I'm coming back early to make the May 10th one, too, from, from London, so I'm trying to like balance all this travel.
You've done one before then.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the residential cluster special permit for seaside at Situate by Toll Massachusetts Land Three Limited Partnership, CEO Toll Brothers Incorporated off of Hatherley and Tilden Roads until April 12th, 2018, at 7:00 PM, and continue the time for action to file decision with the town clerk until April 30th, 2018.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay dry.
Unbelievable. And then we have to, we have to sign one of these.
The offer terms have a back, or she's going to rebrand.
The one we can do, though, with the zoning we can do, right? The, I'm sorry, the Green Bush zoning we can do.
I have to change the other one to reflect more what you actually wanted in it.
But I guess, should we sign this tonight, then? The, the Green Bush zoning one, or do you want us to wait?
You don't have to, I mean, you can wait till next time, or you can sign it now, it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Okay, let's take care of any questions. Yep, we have.
to Amory Engineers for stormwater inspections for 489 Countryway.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we have a broken one and it jams every time, so.
Moving on up.
Minutes. Yep, we've got a couple.
Consider or two?
We got two, yeah. Move to approve Situate Planning Board meeting minutes from February 22nd, 2018 and October 26th, 2017.
October. I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The A's on report?
No, they're not.
All quiet on the list.
Except for the water.
Except for water. Karen, planning development report?
Ah, we remain pretty busy and you can see what I'm spending my life doing, so.
I talked to Brad about, he went to the, unfortunately, I wasn't able to go to the capital planning committee on the master plan.
I guess they approved it or they're going to recommend it.
Yeah, yeah, but he went and Karen Campfield was there as well supporting it, so hopefully that will, you know, get a good recommendation for town meeting, for the, you know, for the request for the allocation for the money to do it. So, you know, if that gets passed at town meeting, then we'll be in a place where we can start the master planning process, you know, updating the master plan.
Concerning that, I think it was, not today's Mariner, but last week's Mariner, there was an article about sort of the master plan and like Green Bush zoning and like people being kind of a little bit against it or not on board. I guess, it was also said in the paper, on February 15th, there was a discussion about a building, but I don't remember that being.
That's a ZBA, that's a ZBA thing.
It said planning board, though. I think that was.
That was an error.
That was an error. We do not have, the ZBA has not filed their section six permit yet with the town clerk and so obviously they can't come to file with the planning board yet.
Okay, well, I read that and I thought, am I just missing it? Because it said planning board, so, okay, that's good, thank you.
No, I mean, we've sort of established that if the ZBA has approved something, then we want to see the approval before people come here asking for site approval.
I guess, speaking of the whole planning issue, personally, I didn't like the tone of that article in the sense, because it made it sound like the planning board wasn't listening to the people. Because it said the planning board, it actually, in that article, said the planning board did not want to hear about the zoning changes being done. And I thought, well, that's not right.
I think there's some misinformation in that article.
Yes.
Yeah.
So maybe that's my point, is how do we control that a little bit better?
Well, I think the idea is to create a process that has, that is fully engaging people in a comment process on the update of the master plan. It's not like we're just going to write a new plan and hand it out, right? There's a whole process involved. There's public meetings and public input and all of that, and that's why it costs so much money to do it.
They're talking about two different things at the same time. They're talking about, you know, you're going through, you're going to be going through a master plan process, there's also this Green Bush visioning from the EDC that's getting, there's been one stakeholder meeting, there has been no quote, broad public meeting yet. And so I think people are getting a little confused as to potentially what's going on.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I think it is a little difficult because, you know, that is kind of almost an outlier in terms of a planning process.
Yes.
I think our challenge is to wrap all of those efforts into a single master plan, right?
Agreed, yeah, agreed.
Not only what they're doing, but what's going on with the water and sewer.
Agreed.
All those things need to kind of be wrapped. We don't need to recreate it, we just need to sort of wrap it in and make it cohesive, right? And make it sort of, does this make sense as a strategic plan, right? There may be things in the visioning plan that ultimately, as we get through it, we say, that doesn't make sense, right?
Right.
We should do something a little different. But I think that's the planning process, right?
Right.
And it's going to be like any plan, that as soon as you print it, it's going to be out of date, right?
Right.
But it's going to have the, I think, it'll have sort of the foundational components to it that sort of guide development and, you know, just the overall growth of the town for the next twenty years, right? I mean, you know, you read it now, they're talking about the coming of the train, right? So it's a little out of date right now. And, you know, I think one of the interesting things would be looking at sort of what was projected and then seeing how much of that really came true, right? How much of that is, really happened versus, you know, the town went off in a different direction, right, for maybe very good reasons, but it should inform the next iteration, in my view. But we do have to try to weave all these things together.
Right, it's a challenge.
As opposed to, I don't want to reinvent the wheel either, right, so.
No, there's been a lot of studies, a lot of planning, a lot of effort already spent that, like you said, it just needs to kind of coalesce together.
Some of it may not have been as well sort of publicized to people who will be affected by it and, you know, these stakeholder meetings and stuff are probably part of that, right, is to try to get input. But I, they spent a lot of time with public input on those, on those visioning plans too, I think. I remember there were two or three different public meetings on those.
Yeah, there was one, there was one, I went to the visioning plan, I think, for both North Situate and for Green Bush, but that was like five years ago or something.
Yeah, no, but I mean, even in this EDC process, I think there were some.
The EDC, yeah, had some, had an open house, I know, at the Maritime Center.
Down at Pier 24, right?
Yeah, at the Maritime Center.
Oh, Maritime Center.
They had an open house, they had a Saturday session and they intend to be having more as things go along, but they've just had one stakeholder meeting yet. They haven't had one with, quote, the general, general public about any Green Bush visioning yet.
Yeah, and I just see that as, you know, sort of the master plan can help facilitate all that sort of happening.
Right, agreed, agreed, yep.
And we ought to, the problem of creating a visioning plan like that in isolation is you're not wrapping it into everything else you're thinking about, right?
Right.
So this is the opportunity to do that.
This is the opportunity to do that, yes.
Well, I think what came out of that, Rich, was Mr. Montero and his neighbors feel that they're going to be losing their homes for business. You know, when I spoke to him, I told him that wasn't, not going to happen.
I mean, he felt the residential area was going to be redistrict.
Yeah, I think when they came, that's, we didn't want to talk, I think that that was one of their fears, was that that's all being developed down there, so, you know, between the brewery and the housing or unions, so they were a little worried about what's going to happen at Fitz Mills. So I think they're worried that they're going to be a little driven out of their homes and not to worry about that, that is, that's a well-established neighborhood and, you know, very concerned.
Yeah, and it's also zoned residential, right? It's not.
No, it's not.
No, it's not. That's the problem, that's the problem.
It's zoned business?
Commercial.
Commercial.
Because it's zoned business.
Business, yeah.
Yes. We've been doing a lot of research on that.
Yeah, and the village business overlay goes up to the brewery, I think.
That's one of those opportunities to really look at, you know, is there something you have to do in kind of a long-term plan to preserve certain neighborhoods, but also allow the commercial development that you would also like to see happen in the Green Bush area, right?
Right.
So it may require some rezoning, right?
Yes, but I mean, but that's, the master plan could recommend that as well.
Yeah.
So like you said, it all is going to integrate together.
Yeah, and what happens with Fitz Mills would be, that would be pretty interesting because that could have a big effect on that little neighborhood back there.
That could have a big effect, yes.
Yep.
But yeah, you know, I think, I think the brewery, you know, there's some parking issues and stuff, but it seems to have been very successful so far, you know?
There's parking issues and traffic rules is heavily involved in them and, I mean, would you, how does the board want to handle that? Does the board want the applicant to come back to you guys to talk to you about the parking issues? Do you want a report from traffic rules? What does the board want?
Well, to the extent that there is a problem, I guess we need to understand the problem and whether there's a fix to it, right?
Right, the problem is sometimes emergency vehicles cannot get down the street because people are parking on both sides. So there is a distinct problem that a solution is trying to be worked out, but as the permitting authority for the microbrewery, how involved would you?
It feels like the parking projections that were part of our approval didn't come to fruition, huh?
Well, I will say.
So maybe we need something updated to really understand kind of where the problem is, but I would say, I would welcome the input of the traffic rules committee and all of that. It sounds like, it's not something we can solve in isolation either, right?
No, no.
Well, and I think, from my perspective, the brewery has done a really good job, I'm connected with them on Facebook, every time they announce something, literally everything, every event they ever say or come on down, they always say parking at the Green Bush tea station or the VTA station, they said, park near there, walk over short. So they, they're advocating not to park in front of their place all the time, so.
Yeah, but that's sort of an unrealistic expectation.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just trying to say they're trying to do something about it, I just wanted to acknowledge that.
No, no, I appreciate that, right, but the fact of the matter is that's why, you know, why we have, you know, parking requirements and zoning bylaws, right, is that it's easy to say, go use an area that nobody's there, but if it's a half a mile walk or something, they're not going to do it.
Yeah, again, we're all lazy, but it isn't that far, relatively speaking, but we're all lazy.
Do you park over there a lot?
I would in a second, yeah.
Do you, though?
On a nice day, yeah, I'd say yes.
On a nice day, yeah. Yeah, I think that's right, and, you know, we shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't, I don't think we should expect that, you know, that creating a parking requirement like that will solve the actual problem because the problem's just sort of the way motorists, you know, tend to work, right?
Well, the other thing is, you know, like what we did with the Enley School, you know, with all the signs along the road saying, you know, this is, you know, do not park here. I mean, it's, because, I mean, there's really only so much space on that brewery site, we're not going to add parking.
That was a little easier to manage because it was basically during drop-off and pickup times and they stationed the teacher and, you know, there were specific things they could do. It seems like this is like all the time, right, over there.
I think it's mostly on Fridays and Saturdays, you know, when it's busy.
Yeah. I don't know, I welcome the opportunity to sort of know more about it and know what kind of solutions people are thinking about.
Okay.
I don't know what you guys think, but I feel like we, you know, we made, we approved it as it is, so.
Right, well, to have a report from trying to.
If we created, if there's a problem, we should understand it so we don't, we don't repeat the problem in some other project, right, but also solve the problem that's already been created, right, or at least attempted. So I'd be, I'd be more than welcome to have them come back and sort of help explain, you know, the issue, particularly if we could, well, and his bill is on the traffic committee, right, traffic rules committee?
Yes, he is.
So I don't know if he's going to be at this, at any meetings that they're going to have about this. Have they already started discussing this?
Yes, they have.
They have? And do you know if they're, what they're considering or what they might recommend?
Um, no, I don't.
Yeah.
That information has not been shared with me.
Why don't we ask them if they can come back and sort of give us an update, kind of what the problems they are that they're seeing and what they're considering as potential solution? I'd like to know, anyway.
Yeah, and I think it would be good doing it in the public meeting setting because then maybe some of the neighborhood folks can come and they can actually tell us what the impacts are.
Yeah, because they did much more directly impact, you know, taking it to the house, yep.
Yeah, I'm not looking to make it a witch hunt or anything, but, you know, just to understand it and then say, how are we, how are we going to get it solved, right? And then I also don't want to repeat that problem again in some other permits, so it would be good to understand, you know, what, you know, what went wrong, so to speak.
Everybody likes beer, that's how that goes.
Yeah. Anything else?
It's like you want to say something, but you don't want to say something.
Then I will entertain, well, Bill's not here, so we'll entertain Richard.
Still entertain his emotional.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The word is.